An Aberdeen City Council member is facing accusations that he raped a child on multiple occasions. The day after his arrest, there are calls for him to be removed from the council. King Five's Drew Mickelson was in court this afternoon as the councilman faced a judge.
According to investigators, Riley Carter confessed shortly after he was arrested last night. Tonight, a fellow city council member is calling for Riley to be kicked out of City Hall, but he likely faces a much worse fate here at the county courthouse. Investigators say Riley Carter knew his victim. He's accused of raping on multiple occasions over the past two years. Carter was elected to Aberdeen City Council last November. Last week, he criticized the city's handling of those experiencing homelessness. Prosecutors say Carter used his position of trust to commit the crimes against the victim, who is under the age of 12. A person identifying themselves on Facebook as Casey Morrison, Aberdeen's council president, called for the council to remove Carter in a public post. Quote, "This has been eye-opening and deeply disturbing. There are predators amongst us, and it is not always plain for all to see just who they are, nor what sickening perversions lie inside them. You think you know someone." Carter was arrested on a domestic violence charge earlier this year. That charge would have been dismissed if he were to stay out of trouble during this calendar year. He has now been charged with one count of child rape, but prosecutors say that number could increase when he's arraigned next week. He's held here on $100,000 bail.
What it do everyday people, man? It's your boy PJ. Today, we back with another lit video. Back in the confession room, yes, we staying lit, big dog, man. Shout out to my everyday people who rock with me every day. Shout out to my player partner, Lucky Buzzakills. He keeps it lit. Make sure you like, comment, and subscribe, and let me know what y'all think about this in the video. Now, today, we got a video about the Riley Carter. He's Aberdeen City Councilman. He's been accused and charged with child rape. Okay, now, he was a social media person who got on social media a lot. And you can see here, this hat that says "Make Pedophiles Afraid Again," okay? So he was not afraid to come at these guys, right? That's what we all thought, but you gotta pay attention to the people who be after these people so much, because guess what this guy was doing? Okay, so the daughter came to the mother and told the mother that, well, that Riley was sneaking into her room. And I believe this is her dad, or maybe stepdad, I'm not sure. This father figure was coming into her room and having intercourse with her. So what he was doing was, as he would enter the room, or go to her room, as he would enter the house, around a certain time, he would cut all the cameras off going into the room. And so as he would cut all the cameras off, that's when, you know, there will be no footage of him going into the girl's room and then, you know, doing his business. So when the girl, the little girl, told the mom, and the mom went and checked the cameras, well, she noticed that all the camera footage was, there was no camera footage at that time whenever he came home. So she immediately went to the police, which as she should, showed him all the evidence of what he was doing. Then she told Riley, I need, you know, we know what you've been doing to our daughter. You need to turn yourself in. You need to turn yourself in. This is not good. "I got it on camera," she said. "I got it on camera." Well, first, he wouldn't confess, because he knew there was no camera footage. Well, eventually, he confessed. So I want y'all to take the time, sit back, watch this confession with me, and we gonna get it. Keep it lit, big dog, man. Everyday people, like, comment, and subscribe. Let me know what y'all think about this in the comment section below.
Riley, I'm TJ.
You too.
Yeah, nice meeting you too. I'm sorry, sir, under these circumstances, man. That pistol magazine, did they ask you any questions about those?
Oh, they did not, no. I didn't realize it was in this jacket, and I've had this jacket about a year and a half, two years. Yeah, I'm obviously not even in my own mind right now.
But there's no, like, gun just floating around somewhere that you need to go, like, notify somebody? Go, "Have a gun off sidewalk" or something like that?
No, 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 nothing like that, no. Take my jacket off?
Absolutely, yeah, make yourself comfortable.
You don't have anything on you?
No.
Oh, okay. Come on, make sure real fast. Wow, you got a little warm in that jacket.
Yeah.
A little sweaty back there.
Yeah.
Kinda like my bra that I'm wearing right now.
So Riley, like I said, my name's TJ. I'm a detective with the sheriff's office. Sorry, Steven.
Steven.
One thing, there's a food stamp card in my wallet. My wife should probably, or she should get back.
Yeah, let's take care of all that stuff, and I know you have some questions, and we have questions, so we're gonna be 100% honest with you, and just hope that you be 100% honest with us. Just a quick thing, I gotta get through just for formality stuff, and then we can get, we can have a conversation, okay? So it's gonna be similar to what, I guess, they advise you out there, but you do have the right to remain silent. Anything you say can be used against you in a court of law. You have the right at this time to talk to a lawyer and have him present with you while you're being questioned. If you cannot afford to hire a lawyer, we'll be appointed to represent you for questioning if you wish. You can decide anytime, exercise your rights, and not answer any questions, make any statements. Do you understand each of those rights I've explained to you?
Yeah.
Okay, and having those rights in mind, do you wanna talk to us today?
Sure.
Okay. And so you said that food card, you want to go to, is it Mia or Maya?
Maya.
Maya?
Maya Hernandez.
Take it out, so we don't forget.
So. Yeah, it's in the left-hand side. It's a blue one. It says Washington on it. Yep, that one right there, or not that one.
Almost there.
Yep, right there.
Yep.
Perfect. You probably give her those other two, the one to Dave and then the one to Libra.
Dave?
Yeah, that one?
This one?
Yep.
So how, were you, did you walk up to the police station, or were you just walking around town?
I was gonna go to Qmart and get some nicotine.
Okay. In a muggy, drizzly?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, obviously, you've been placed under arrest, and I don't wanna be around the bushes. Has to do with everything that came up today. When we got the information, and Aberdeen got the information what happened, they mean, like, called the sheriff's office and asked us to check into what Willow had said, because they wanted this to be an impartial, independent investigation with no bias or anything like that. So that's why I'm here, and that's why we're here talking to you, okay? And I hope you can respect that, respect what Aberdeen just doesn't wanna have anything to do with it. But I am concerned from the information that Willow described today, and I wanna hear from you, because it sounds like it's been kind of a rough last few months, from what I heard from Maya. And I'm sorry about all the stuff that happened with you guys in December, and that, for any dad, that's a terrible thing for you guys to go through. And it sounds like that kind of sparked a downward spiral that kinda got out of control. Is that fair to say? So Willow made some pretty, pretty honest statements today, and was talking about things that happened in the morning time in her bedroom. And I wanna know, like, I, a lot of times when we, when we get situations like this, we talk to people, we constantly hear, like, that's not the person that they know themselves to be, and it's somebody that makes a mistake. And I'm not gonna sit here and cast judgment or anything, but our job is find facts and understand what, you know, what occurred, and to see what the validity to Willow's statements are. So can you talk about what your relationship is with Willow, and how long you've been in her life?
I've known Willow since she was four. Think she's a great kid. She's a, I don't know how to explain it, always just outgoing, but kinda kept, keeps to herself. Good kid.
And so you're her stepdad?
Yeah.
Okay. How long have you been her stepdad for?
We got married in 2021, August 13, 2021.
Okay.
Maya and I, we've lived together for six years. And she's always had Willow. So, what is it, 2019?
Yeah.
February 2019.
Okay. And as a stepdad for Willow, so she, was she been probably four or five? Okay. As her stepdad, like, was that a hard role to step into with her being that young, or?
Yes and no. I always kept in the back of my head that there's gonna be a time when she gets to know her real dad, and so that's a line that needs to be respected. And that's now me to try to take that place. Just stay available, you know? That's the best I could do.
Okay. What, like, how close would you guys be as far as being her stepdad? Are you guys distant?
We were like, close, not like, super close, just, like, I'd say she felt comfortable to always, like, throw fits in front of me. You know, ask for, like, things for birthday or Christmas, or complain, or, you know, tell me about her favorite color, or food, or something.
What kind of activities would you guys do together?
Oh, I would say much, aside from watching TV. Yeah, that's about it. Yeah.
In the living room?
Yeah.
And then, do you guys have two other kids between you and Maya, or is there more children?
Two, and then our son, Dad, passed away. So we have Isley, she's five, and then Iggy, she's two.
Okay. And do you feel like you have a similar relationship with all three kids? Or do you feel like you're closer with your two biological kids?
It's a different kind of relationship. I'd say with my stepkids. You know, with my biological kids, I don't know how to explain it, like, it sounds rude to say, and I hate saying it, but there's, I feel like more of a connection. Not saying I don't feel, you know, like, a connection with my stepkids, just with, you know, my own kids. I'm still wrapping my head around things. I'm still just...
Yeah. So to your understanding, why, why did we get involved? Or why did law enforcement get involved with Willow's situation?
Yeah.
What do you know about it?
Maya was texting me, and she said that they were doing a rape kit, and I thought that was pretty wild. And that was it. That was the last time. Because the way, for me, I'm sitting there, I just got Iggy to sleep. It was about noon, noon 30, I think. And no, maybe it was a little later, 1:30 possibly. I go in the living room picking up trash, and then I heard the front door open and shut. So I come out, and I actually see Maya, and she's got Iggy, and she has eyes in by the hand, and then she's walking out the door, and was asking Willow what's going on. And then she just looked at me and said, "How cute you." I didn't think that she was gonna be accusing me of touching Willow. I didn't, like, that bit shocked me. And so she walked across the street to Eugene, and then I just walked down to the basement and sat there. And I called her, and she said, "How cute you," and then told me to kill myself. So she told me, you know, what was going on. She said Willow said that I touched her. She said that I unplugged her camera and then touched her. There's only been maybe once or twice I have touched that camera, and that's if I go up there in the morning, either to wake him up for school or grab something, and the light would be flashing green, and then unplug it and then plug it back in to reset it, because I know Maya's always freaked out about those cameras being on. And that's it. Anyways, I go down to the basement, and she told me to kill myself, so I did set up the rope. I thought about it. I really did. Because I'm done, man. I'm done. I am just done. I'm maxed out. I am maxed out. Everything that we have gone through in life, everything, and now this? And it doesn't matter, because being on City Council, everybody knows now, that's over now. And we were right there, man. Everybody was amped up. We were gonna change some things in Aberdeen, and now that's gone. It's gone. It's all gone. I'm done mentally. I'm done physically, emotionally. I tried. I tried this year. I tried. You know what? Craving dying, my wife always blamed me for his death. Reminds me how much of a loser I am, 24/7. Can't find a job at the start. Was gonna start a new job tomorrow, but not Verizon. That's not, obviously, a good thing anymore.
Riley, can you tell me more about the cameras? I was trying to understand what the camera situation was. I kept hearing about cameras. So what are they for?
Oh, Maya has them in every room, like, the kids' rooms. And then she's got them throughout the house, and we put them on the outside of the house for security reasons. And the main reason for it is just, one of the stepkids is autistic, and he'll have, like, meltdowns or whatever, maybe, and now she can keep an eye on him.
And when they're, when they're in the house, like, are they inside the bedrooms? Or like, in the hallways? Or how are they set up in there?
So these kids' room, they have the camera, like, inside the room hallway, or like, the big entryway. There's one on this wall here, and then I think another one in the back. And then downstairs, there's one on our son's little memorial shelves, and then one in the living room. And I think there's one in the kitchen. And then outside, we got the floodlight, and then we got the sides of the house.
Okay. Do you have access to view those cameras, or is that?
Just Maya.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good bleep.
Okay. Like, get on your phone and, like, white's camera type?
Yeah.
Okay. How do they, do they record just 24/7? Or do you guys have to turn them on to record, or how do they?
Movement, like, they detect movement, and then they record, like, they stay on. And then if you move throughout the house or whatever, then they'll kick on and start recording.
Okay. Who set all that up?
Maya.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was just to keep track of the kids in case they had meltdowns, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the biggest thing. And then plus the amount of theft we dealt with when we moved in there. I had to call the cops, you know, almost 20 times, first year living there. And that's when we started getting the cameras, and realizing that was a good idea.
Right. Do they ever pay off outside?
Doesn't matter, man. If I got guys on video doing stuff, don't get arrested. Nothing ever, nothing ever comes of it. Yesterday, two days ago, there's a guy living in this tent behind R.B. harassing his neighbor. And she talked to me about it, and I talked to this guy about it before, and she called the cops, and nothing happened. I mean, the guy just got out of prison, and he's just being a total menace, harassing her, and then, you know, nothing happened. I mean, nothing, never happens there. And Aberdeen, it's very frustrating.
Yeah, I get it. So how did, how did the conversation go between you and Maya then, when she came home? Did she tell you what Willow said, or did you guys?
You know, I wanna say she messaged me, because I called her, and she'd said, yeah, like, she said, she said I touched Willow, and I said, no. And then she said, that's when she told me to kill myself. And then I did set up the rope. I was gonna do it. And then I texted her, and I just said, I don't, I didn't even know. I said, well, I didn't even know, I said, something about, I mean, I'm freaked out, this is crazy. And then she, I don't know, messaged me, you know, how could I? And then she told me she was gonna get a bag of my clothes and set them in the backyard for me. And then she messaged me something. What did she say? I don't remember. I don't think I had to do this, Willow. That was me and Winona, yeah, Winona, her brother, brought the clothes out. She said, I just got your clothes. And then that's when I got picked up.
Okay. Are all those text messages still on your phone from Maya?
Should be.
Okay. If I were to look at them, is there a code to unlock your phone or anything like that?
No.
Unlocked? Okay. So Willow's statements weren't made to Maya initially. She told her counselor today that they were talking about something different, and Willow broke down crying, and said she didn't wanna talk about it when she got asked more, like, you know, what's wrong, what's wrong? That's when she started talking about a history of, over the past one to three years, of things happening in the morning time where you were coming in her bedroom and putting your hand down her pants, and touching her vagina, and touching her anus. And so that's what kind of sparked all this stuff happening today. And I sat in an interview with Willow just a little while ago, and watched her basically relive it again when she was having to describe what was happening. And, yeah, I don't know how an 11-year-old girl was strong as Willow is. But she was very descriptive of what was happening. And like I said, like, we're not here to cast judgment, and we're not here to label people, and understand, like, there's things that happen in our lives that cause us to make mistakes. This 11-year-old girl talking about things that were done to her that shouldn't have been done. Willow talking about things that were done to her that shouldn't have been done. She was talking about being told to keep it a secret, not telling anybody. And she was talking today about how she couldn't keep it inside no longer. She had to tell somebody. So Riley, is there truth to what Willow was saying?
He's a coward.
She said the last time it happened was this morning. And she talked about how her camera gets unplugged before you come in the room, and she just pretends asleep, but she said that it wouldn't matter if she was sleeping or what. It would happen anyway. And so right now, we're collecting, she's up at the hospital, and we're collecting DNA samples from her vagina and from her anus. And this is, this is an opportunity where I'm offering you a chance to explain what happened, and like, a mistake was made, and it's time to be truthful and take ownership of the mistake, and not let it catch up to you down the road being proven by DNA, because we get touch DNA off of things all the time. There's the sweat glands in your fingers that can do that. It doesn't have to be bodily fluids. It doesn't have to be semen or saliva or anything like that.
I did go out to her room this morning. I didn't, I didn't touch her. I did not touch her. I went up there, wasn't seeing. I don't remember, she squashed nuggets or something. So I made some nuggets for the, for the other ones.
It's crazy.
If you didn't touch her this morning, what would cause Willow to say that that happened? Will it cause her to say that this wasn't the only time it happened? It's happened lots of times.
I don't know.
So TJ and I, we've been doing this for a long time. And I think that one of the, one of the biggest things that we see is especially for the children, is getting somebody that, that takes that ownership. Because the children are the ones that gotta push forward and move on the rest of their life, living with something that they didn't feel comfortable talking about, something that tr- traumatized them. And if they bottle that up, it just, it doesn't, doesn't help them in the long run. And then when they do come out and say something about something traumatic that happened. When what they said is followed up with, it was a mistake, I'm sorry. I messed up. I made some poor choices. It helps them move on and progress versus never having that, that, that closure. Never having that, that feeling of, oh, no one's ever gonna believe me ever, the rest of my life if I ever say anything. And we've seen that in multiple cases throughout our many years working together. And I think that's one of the biggest things that, that we see in the, the children is that they have, they, they're wired different than us as adults. They have to have, especially when it's somebody that, that's so close to them, they have to have that, that ability to move on. Cause if mom doesn't believe, you know, mom doesn't believe her, then who would've been able to believe her? Nobody's gonna believe her the rest of her life she lives with that.
Riley, if Willow was sitting in here instead of us, what would you say to her?
Say, I love her? Proud of her? She's a great kid.
Would you talk to her about the things that she said, she's saying that you did to her?
I would say, when you're comfortable to talk about it, I would talk about it, but, uh, um.
Would you afford her that ability to have that closure?
No, wouldn't.
If she's in here or wherever, if she's with you, no one else is here, would you give her that ability to have that closure? That knowing whatever may have happened, um, that's brought us to this point. That just what I told you about, you know, there's a point in time when we make our mistakes, but we shouldn't let them affect the most of us life, for the remainder of their life, right? Would you give her that opportunity to say, you're sorry, or it was a mistake, it should never happen to you? Things like that.
Things like that, sure. I know, uh, the one that picked her up in the Sunday market, a couple Sundays ago, a few Sundays ago. And, uh, there's this weird guy that likes to hang out, you know, with Maya, she sells things at the Sunday market there. And this guy still likes hanging out. And so when I was driving her home, cause I just picked up Willow, it was just until us, cause I had to go back and get Maya's stuff. Um, like I said, I had asked her, I was like, you know, was that that one guy talking to your mom? She's like, yeah. And I asked, well, did they talk a lot? And she said, yeah. And I know that. And then I guess that scared her. Uh, when I asked her that. And so I felt really bad, really, you know, I mean, scared of. Uh, I, I did, it was, it wasn't anything. I wasn't thinking like, you know, I, I don't know, I, I was not gonna stop anyone, you know?
What does Willow normally talk about? What's her hobbies? What does she do?
Um, she likes to hang. Uh, she likes, uh, to play with slime. Um, she likes jumping on the tampa lean. Uh, she wants to get into wrestling this year. Um, she played basketball last year. I think she liked it. Um, she had some guitars. I never really got into it. Puzzles. I have that puzzle on the back of my table. And then she watches YouTube. She watches one show all the time. And Willow's just into, uh, anime right now. And she likes scary movies.
Those are all typical things for an eleven-year-old kid, right? All appropriate things for an eleven-year-old kid to do, hobbies and activities, sports.
Yep.
Okay. Eleven-year-old kids talk about that kinda stuff. They talk about the sports they're playing or what teams they're on or what their best friends doing or what movies they like. Eleven-year-old kids don't talk about how their stepdad comes in their bedroom and touches them on their vagina and on their anus. If it's not happening. And so that's why we, we keep coming back to like, why, why would Willow bring that up today in a counseling session and then bring it up again and and be more descriptive in an interview? And now she's heading up to the hospital to go talk to a nurse that's trained in, 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 in kids and collecting evidence. Why is Willow saying that Riley put his hand underneath her pants and touched her on her vagina and put his fingers inside her vagina? If it isn't something that happened to her? There's ways to get through this Riley and, and I know it's a struggle to have all this come down all in the same day of getting burned by Maya and then having, having, getting involved and then us in this room talking. I know that when you woke up today, this was the last place you expected to be. But it's what we do moving forward here is what's gonna affect a lot of lives. And there, like I said, there's ways to get through this. There's programs that can be offered through the court. There's things that can be offered to help you deal with the demons and all the things that you've been dealing with, the stress. Um, there's ways to get through what happened to Willow and to help everybody move on from it, but it starts right here by being truthful and taking ownership of a mistake that happened. It doesn't define who you are as a person, but if that's something that that you wanna option ability, it's, it starts right now. It's, it's saying that you fucked up. Because I believe what Willow said.
So Riley, you are, you are, you wanna accept things for what they are. There's certain things in life you don't recover from.
Tell it.
Tell us about it. I want to tell you guys. I do. I'm trying.
I get all night Riley.
Um, you guys got families? That's important. You know, ah, God, this just sucks. So close. So close to accomplishing good things. Doing something great. So close to getting the drugs out of Aberdeen. So close to getting, you know, all the craziness out of the streets. So many people believe in me. And now it's over. It's gone. It's crushing. Crushing to the people. Crushing to my wife. But she hates me. And I'm not going there trying to deflect or anything like that. She does. She blames me fully for Craven's death. I don't blame her. That broke me as a human. Craven dying broke me as a human. I should've been better. I should've been more for her as she was recovering. But I wasn't. I'm just, I don't know, a sack of shit? I'm just a pile of shit? That's all I am.
You're not. That's putting a label on yourself instead of we're not, we're not judging or labeling in here.
Riley, you're not, you're not some monster that's
Who would they?
Just out there doing evil. You're not that person. That's not you. I've never met you before. You've never met me before. But just a brief interaction here, I could tell that you're, you're a genuine person that actually cares about people. You're not a monster. We talk to monsters a lot. We've spent many, long nights in here with murder, multiple murder suspects. We've killed multiple people, him and I.
Wow.
We've sat in here with, with, with people who are legitimate monsters against children. That's not you. That is not you. That's not who you are as a person. And people know that. That's not who you are as a person. You're not a monster. So just keep that in mind. That, that's not who you are. You're somebody who's made some mistakes. But you still care about people. You still want the best for people. Even through your mistakes, you wanna make sure that people are still taken care of. Cause that's what you keep bringing up. You still care about people. You still care about the state that I'm in. Even though you say that your, your wife hates you, you still care about her. You still care about Willow. Mistakes aside, you still care about everybody. You're not a monster. Okay? And we are not judging you for any of the mistakes. Okay?
We've also sat in here and talked to people who do care and are good people. Who've had something terrible happen to them in their lives. And a lot of times in these situations, something that happened to them when they were a kid or growing up, they planted a seed. And I mean, just a couple weeks ago, we were talking to somebody. He said that when they were ten years old and somebody touched them. And they kept that buried down deep inside until something, when they became an adult. Something bad happened to them that caused them to say, they couldn't control it no more. And it started with watching child porn videos. And it started with giving longer, more attention to one kid versus the other ones. And then it started like moving more towards they couldn't control their urges no more. And then the touching started and they couldn't control it. And it turned into us having to get involved and being, sitting in this room to say, hey, we're at a crossroad right now. This is an opportunity for us to stop that and offer an opportunity to deal with the underlying problems and get you the help that you need. But it starts by telling the truth. And we can't go advocate for you for, for treatment if you're not willing to accept that what Willow said is what happened because she said it happened because a one year old girl doesn't make that stuff up.
Nope.
I don't wanna bullshit you guys. I don't wanna, I don't bullshit you guys. I mean, there's, there's not an attraction to Willow. There's, I don't I don't, I don't, I don't know. I really, I really don't know.
Then what is?
My brain's fucked up, sure. And a lot of stress in our lives. Well. I'm not, I'm not just, I'm trying to get up to it and work, work on it. So I just keep thinking of what Maya said to me. You know, she kept, kept telling me, you know, be a man. If you want any kind of redemption towards yourself or my respect or kids' respect, you know. Fess up to everything. Be a man about it, you know.
It takes courage to do that. When was the first time that happened?
What you said really resonates as well. That's uh for her own healing, for Willow's healing. That's, that's huge. Oh God, I'm such, just a rotten sack of shit. The two daughters. You know, you, you never, you you never know love until you have a kid, you know? That's the one thing that keeps you going. You never know pain until you hold your own dead kid. That really messes you up too. Yeah, I, I don't. There's no attraction. Yeah, I noticed things developing. About a year ago, I think. You jumped on her back and gave her a baby bag ride. Yeah, that was just a thing. And you know, Maya pointed it out to us and said, oh gee. I noticed too. How did it start? Sorry, I, I'm just that I have ADHD pretty severe, so I get that in my, in my mind thinking of the house bills. And just now, me, now I'm here. Now that's all separated and I have to accept that. And then Maya's left with a piece of shit car. Never get the SUV fixed. Needs a new engine. Now I gotta worry about her. How's she gonna make it? How's she gonna do things?
And Willow will also be concerned about sleeping at night and wake up in the morning to Riley coming in her bedroom. But now Willow doesn't have to worry about that.
You're fighting, you're fighting with yourself right now. And the crazy part is, is that everything you're saying is going right back to what I said. Regardless of the situation, you still care about the outcome for everybody else. You, you haven't spoken about your outcome. You're more concerned about other people, which speaks volumes for you. You're, you're, you're selfless. You're out, you're out to serve other people to make sure that they're, they're gonna be okay, right? But you gotta do that for Willow too. You want the best for her. Shit happens. But you still gotta, so that you get yourself out of that and help her out. At this point, it's recovering for her. And recovering for the rest of the family. You can still care for them. You can still help them.
You can be able to help them.
You solidifying telling us that Willow's not out there lying, that's a start. That's a big step. That's what Maya wants. That's what Willow wants. You talking to us about the things that Willow mentioned that happened to her. I know you might not see it, but we see it on our end. This, this element of just a release of emotions is, is huge. Where they get that, that that, that almost feeling of I can relax. I'm not making this up in my head. I'm not crazy.
And she's not gonna have to tell the story again.
When we go talk to her later or talk to Maya, we're that in-between right now. And for us to have that conversation with them, letting them know that you did do what Maya said, you know, have that courage to come forward. That's something that we can do on our end. And I know it's right and like, like I said, you're fighting with yourself, right? But that it'll bring you at ease when you know that there's mistakes that you have made. And then you are open about it. You no longer, you no longer have to deal with that stuck inside you. Kept with you only. And now you've got that feeling that's keeping up all that bad space in there along with everything else that's going on. That's one less thing you have to sit there and hold on to. That's one less feeling that you gotta hold in and just work on every day throughout the day of dealing with that and trying to cover it up in your own mind. You will no longer have to deal with that. That's something you can get out and be done with it.
I agree, I agree too. Absolutely. Stay nice. Move me out. Now what's now next? Moving forward?
We, we can discuss all that stuff. That's something we can talk about. We got time.
I mean, like what, what am I looking at?
It, it all depends on where we're at with you. Right?
Conversation starts with, with what you're looking at. Conversation starts when we like you said, we're fact finders. We have no control over what happens after this gets forwarded over to the prosecutor. What we have control over is the conversation we have with him. And when I go to the prosecutor in the morning and I say, hey, Riley Carter doesn't take ownership for nothing. He, he has more concern about what's gonna happen to him versus what happened to Willow. Prosecutor's not gonna have any sympathy towards your situation. I go talk to the prosecutor and say Riley Carter told us what happened. He made a mistake. He told us he made a mistake and he's thoroughly sorry and he wants Willow to know that he's sorry. He doesn't want to put Willow through any more pain or suffering that she's been going through. Prosecutor's gonna see that in a completely different light than the first situation. But we can't say and we can't tell you that X, Y, and Z is gonna happen from here on out because we don't have control over that. Our, our control is to to gather the facts, the who, what, why, when.
Put his ass in a trick pad.
And report that to the prosecutor and let them make their decision. And the why is the number one question why everybody wants to know. Everybody wants to know why. We can't, we can't prove why by cell phone records or DNA evidence or video footage. That just proves the who, and the what, and the how. The why comes from these conversations and, and coming out in the open and saying, yeah, I, I made a mistake. And I'm sorry for what I did. And these are, these are the things that made me, led me down the path and make those choices. That's the why.
Sack over the morning, man. I think my other girls too. Cause you have some thinking about Willow.
Riley, I can tell that you have some remorse for some things that happened. Right? I can tell that, that that what happened to Willow, you regret, you're sorry for it. And I'm just feeding off of pretty much your, just how, what you're talking about in your language, your body language. But that you have that remorse of like, man, I messed up. I shouldn't have done that. I can tell. But it's not just me through all of our training with the FBI and everything else that, that is gonna speak back to the prosecutor or to Willow, right? I can tell that that's what kind of person you are. You, you're remorseful. You will take ownership for your actions. And again, you're, you care. And you're in this shitty time, the one thing you're thinking about is your kids. Which is great. And that proves my point again. You're not a monster. Riley, you, you're a, you're a good person who made a mistake. Riley, you've been doing really good at making great efforts to improve something that you, you saw you needed to fix being in the city of Aberdeen. And you took something upon yourself, your own time to dedicate your, your stress and everything else to helping fix that. You're a strong-willed person Riley. And I think that you being that strong needs to come out now, being that strong person and having that courage to show us and tell us about your remorse, your, 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 your apology for the things that your actions. And I think you can do it. And I think you know you can. I, I, I don't, I don't think that you're a bad person, like I mean. I think that you're somebody that's made a mistake. And Riley, I think that once you once you bring that remorse out and you tell us about it, that just builds that, builds that inside you with more courage, you're a more courageous person. And you're standing by who, who you are. You've got your pillars in life, those things that you believe in. And by talking with us and showing us that remorse and that you're sorry for your actions makes those pillars stand strong. Don't, don't let, don't let something that, that internal feeling in not being the person who you are, start breaking down one of your, your set pillars. The person who you grown up to be, the person who you are. Don't let it break that down. One thing you can do is maintain, maintain that platform. Riley, I wanna believe that you are that strong, courageous person. Who's gonna take ownership of your actions. But I want, I wanna believe it. But I want you to show me. Riley, even though you've made the mistake. You can still be that strong voice for other people. Cause you're not alone. You're not the only person that deals with this stuff. You can be that strong voice for other people who are going through similar situations. Dealing with the sim- similar types of stresses and whatnot. You can still be that strong voice for people. Cause that's who you are as a person, right?
Yeah, yeah. My head is fucked up though. I'll tell you guys that. I need some, I need some serious, serious. One-on-one with the psychologist doctor or something.
Let's get there. So TJ said it all starts here. And you know you can do it.
And Riley, if we didn't care about you and if we didn't care about Willow. When I got that phone call from Aberdeen tonight, I could've just told Officer King. Drive him downstairs to the basement and book him in the jail. Deal with him in the morning. My day ended at five o'clock. But if I didn't care about you and. Helping get to the bottom of, of what all this is and I didn't care about Willow getting past what she had to go through today. And getting closure of this whole situation and trying to give you the help that you deserve. Then I wouldn't, I wouldn't brought you in here with Christina and sit down and talk to you. Obviously, huge, huge mistake, huge. We've, my and I, oh, distress in our home has been unreal. I, I don't wanna just give you a bunch. Excuses. I should be my own person. You know, I don't wanna, Maya would always get so mad at me and scream, you do not use certain things as excuses, but, you know. That's, that's what's going on. There's, there's so much just on my shoulders at all times, just. Chewing in my ear constantly. It's, it sucks. It really, really, really sucks. Uh, I, I just get these weird kicks. I don't know why. I don't, I don't know what it is. If I, if I think of something, you know, I gotta have it, touch it. Feel it. I, I don't know. Does that make sense? Like, that's just, it's some, something weird in my head. I don't, I don't like it. I don't like it, but that's just something. I don't, I don't know. It's. Ah, still wrapping my own brain around everything. You know, it's, this is. Yes, be a goddamn man, Riley. Be a fucking man. He wants some miserable existence. I'll turn that. Majority at this point, we're here. There are, uh, are things that, uh. That I, I don't do.
Tell us about one of those times. Riley, do you mind if I help you out? Help you push past that, that barrier? If, if I. And I just want that, that yes or no, whichever it would be. Is what Maya or what Willow is saying, did that happen to her?
I don't know what she said, fully. Um, so I, I can't, um. But, uh, touching did happen.
So touching did happen? Did it go anything beyond touching? And we're not talking about piggyback rides anymore? No, we're talking about touching Willow's vagina. This is you being honest with yourself as well, Riley. Stand true to those boundaries that you've built on. You're not only doing this for Willow, you're doing it for yourself, for everybody else. You're a good man, Riley. You're not. It's head for self. It's nothing beyond the touching. You're not a monster, right?
It's just, it's crushing to so many people and having to get let down and hurt. You know what? So many people just feel, you know, they were happy. They felt change on them. Then this happens. Oh, that sucks.
But this was happening all along. Just like TJ said, this is, there were outside influences, things that. Brought you to make these mistakes. This isn't who you are.
What the fuck are these cops talking about?
And I don't know what can bring me. To this level of what the fuck.
Never in your wildest dreams would you have thought that you would touch, touch Willow inappropriately. That wasn't something that you envisioned, was it?
No, no.
It's a mistake that happened, right? It's not something that, that you planned your life saying, this is what I wanna do, right? But it happened. And we gotta move on, right? So let's move on from this. And let's build on this. Let's continue to progress. You touching Willow is a mistake. You touching Willow is not the person who you are. But you. Coming forward and talking about it, that's who you are. Manning up to your mistakes. About how many times did this happen?
Five times maybe. It's just real fast. I don't know. Just a weird impulse type.
You nasty fuck.
Over how long period of time?
I'd say a year.
Each one of those times was in a different place of the house or was always in the same room?
Uh, I'm always in the same room.
Which one?
Uh, in her room.
Is it at different times of day or always the same time of day?
Mostly during the same time of the day. In the morning, uh, before school pass.
Before, so you said before school, so like. You'd be getting the kids up even like waking them up. I know I had to get woken up. I wouldn't wake up on my own to be ready for school.
Yeah, none of the big kids stood up on their own. So I turned to wake them up.
Same thing with Willow, to be able to make sure she, she got up. During those five times, would you unplug the camera when you went into your bedroom?
It would, um, she would already have it unplugged. And she, she would do it. She would unplug it.
Like all night or before you got in there?
And it would already be unplugged. I mean, I used to have the app on my phone, um, to where I could like stop recording and things like that.
So would you stop recording during those times when you walk in?
Uh, I, I, no. I did once. Um, but I, I didn't do anything. I didn't. Then that was it. I turned it back on. Cause it. Yeah, scared me. It was, you know. Like, why, why do you even have this impulse, right? Like, like, why do you have that? It's not like you just talked to somebody about it.
Was it impulse to have sex with Willow or just to touch her?
Um, just to touch. Yeah, there was no impulse to have sex, like. I, I guess it, it's not even a. A sexual thing. I don't feel attracted. It's just this weird impulse. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. It's, it's so weird. God, this is just a weird fucking conversation. Developing, you know, in certain areas and, ah, you know, I just. Fuck is wrong with me?
Did it start by putting your hand under your shirt and just touching her, her chest?
No. Are you, what, what are you asking?
Were you talking about developing? Did you start by touching her, her chest as it was developing or did you? When you, the times of those five times that you were touching her, would you just put your hands down her pants and touch her arm or vagina?
No, no, I mean, I touched her up top.
Under her shirt or above it?
Above it. There was a time that I touched her. Vagina. Um, I didn't know where it was. And. That was it on that.
How long ago was that?
That school wasn't long ago.
Did your fingers go inside of it?
No. Maybe like, cause. Kind of like just a straight downward angle, not as like.
Like in between or, or labia or in between?
Yeah.
He only saw her, he got caught.
Didn't that only happen once then?
Yeah.
Anywhere else? Didn't you touch her anywhere else?
Um, I did reach down and grab her butt before. When she was laying in bed.
Under her underwear?
No, outside of it. Like her sweatpants and, yeah.
So she talked to us about how your fingers would go inside of her? So she talked to us about how your fingers would go inside of her, the parts that she pees with and then rub them around?
Didn't stick like, I said, um, the surface. No, I no, I, I don't, I don't know. It's just fucking weird impulse, just just wanna feel, I don't know what it is. Like, like I don't know, like where it even came from, I don't understand it, and I hate it, fucking hate it about me. I, I don't get it. You know, I, I, I guess, like, I fucking never, I would blow my fucking brains out, you know, but if I got, I got my two daughters, my two others, doesn't matter though.
Should've.
Fucking never been, probably never seen them again.
Took the pussy route out, just take yourself out.
When was the first time that happened?
So about a year ago.
When was the last time it happened?
That was a couple days ago. I don't know, in fact, they, all these days, they're surrounded.
Happened this morning. You've been, you've been doing it a lot, more than five times.
So like one couple days ago, that was when you touched her vagina?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
How long would it last for, would it be like just run in a room and touch her vagina and run out, or would you stay in there for several minutes, or until she woke up, or what happened?
In and out. There was our, like a I don't know, I like, you know, with your wife, you, you get things going because you want to, you know, advance with it. I don't, I don't know, there's no I don't know, I don't, I don't know, I just, I don't, I don't know.
You want to ask.
Wasn't even, it wasn't a pleasurable, you know, thing, it's just, what the fuck?
How long did you have your hand on her vagina?
Not long. Just kind of reached down and touched kind of thing. And then, that was it.
Was she asleep?
Uh, yes.
Does she wake up anymore?
Um, I don't think so. I, I even said, you know, her name, oh, like that. And she didn't answer, so, sleeping.
Did you say that before you put your hand in her?
Uh, yeah, I think so, maybe at the same time.
Have you ever talked to her now?
Um no. Yeah. Actually, I apologized to her once, twice.
When it happened, or just randomly?
Um, when it happened.
Tell me, tell me about one of the times that you apologized, what happened?
I, I don't know how to explain it, I just told her, I what was my exact words to her, it said some long lines of, uh, I am, I am so sorry, you know, I don't I don't, I don't even know what the hell that was about. And I apologized. And that was about it, she didn't really, didn't think anything out of it, but god, what the fuck?
Was she awake that time when you apologized, cause obviously?
Yeah.
Okay, what'd you, what did you touch on that, one of those times?
What did I, what did I what?
So on, on, let's just say one of the times that you apologized to her, uh, and then she was awake, what did you touch, what part of her?
Um, I, I didn't touch her in that point in time. Um, you know, this was when we were like in a car. Um, yeah.
That how the conversation come on?
I just, it was silent and, uh, and, you know, good, good vibe in the air, wasn't nothing weird or anything. And, uh, I just said, hey, you know, I did that, I'm really, I'm really sorry. Said, I don't know, I don't understand what was that about, and then I asked her, are you okay? And I said, yeah, alright.
Cool. What'd you say, you, you did that, like, what'd you tell her?
What I said.
How did she know that, what you did?
When I touched her, because she knew that I, you know, and so and I was, you know, on the, the surface of the clothes, above, you know, that was no, that was, uh you know, like I said, about a year ago. Maybe that time, I don't know. Since January, my, everything's all mush up here. I told her sorry.
Still say I'm sorry.
Did she know that you touched her vagina?
I assume so. Didn't like ask her going detail.
Two days ago, was the camera plugged in or unplugged when you went in her bedroom?
Um, it was, uh, unplugged.
Did you unplug it, or was that unplugged?
It was unplugged when I walked in.
Okay, did you make sure to look up and check for it to be unplugged, or you just noticed it was on the way out, or?
Um, I noticed on the way in. Because the, uh, the outlet for it's right here to the left. Yeah. I mean, I, I built that bedroom. So on the way out, it was pretty good.
Now, in your house, where is the bedroom at?
Upstairs, like right at the top of the stairs. Um, there's, there's upstairs two bedrooms, to the left and right, a bathroom right here, and there used to be one big open, like living room area, and then another bedroom in the back. Um, so I just basically just put a wall here, and a wall here, and a doorway here, um, and then that's her room.
Is it painted different than the other rooms in the house?
Uh not even really. I don't think so. I think my brother, if I had the same color, then the five-year-old and two-year-old downstairs.
She have any decorations on the wall?
Uh, yeah.
Like what?
Um, uh, what does she have? She put up her own shelves, she has like little cloud things. I'm not sure what else. She put a TV in there.
And she is, does she have a regular sized bed that sits up off the floors, or mattresses on the floor?
Uh, yeah, it sits up off the floor.
Would you have to pull her covers back to get your hand down her pants, or would she be laying on top of the covers, or?
She, she under covers kinda on the side.
So Riley, I I knew I wanted to believe you, that you were honest, so I do appreciate you pushing past that, that barrier. So now that we've gone past that, if Willow was in here what would you, would you have anything to tell her?
Oh, I'm beyond sorry of, uh, all the damage this has caused her, her mom, her sisters, her brothers, their community. Literally, everything and everyone that is let down by this. Sorry to uncover it, I deserve whatever's coming my direction, I deserve it. And I hope that she can heal, and Maya can heal. And they all find what it is that they need in their life to live the absolute best life that they can.
You took that from stupid.
Um, Riley, I'm gonna more than likely apply for a warrant for your phone to look at the text messages between you and Maya.
That's fine.
Is there anything that's gonna come off that phone that's you wanna get out in the open right now?
No, I, a hundred percent you can go through it right now if you want, um, I, I don't like look at I don't even look at porn, normal porn, I can imagine probably wondering if I'm into CP or anything like that, hell, no, no, absolutely not.
I just wanna get that cleared up now while we're here before I've been surprised by it and then have to go have another conversation. I appreciate you telling me.
Yeah, no, I don't even, like you said, I don't even have a passcode on it. Um, I used to fuck around on my phone before, other females on social media or whatever, with my wife, you know, she'd get mad, so I just don't, you know, I just don't do it anymore. I mean, react to anything else, nothing, and I haven't, I don't have a passcode, um, I use Facebook, TikTok. Um, I started a, a, a Facebook group in Aberdeen, and it was a hit, took off pretty good. And, uh, so I'm on there, you know, all the time, just talking to people about politics in the area. But I don't, I don't even look at porn, I don't. Used it, back when I was younger. Back when I was single, but Maya, she doesn't like it. You know, respect that. I did that anyway. Turned around being the biggest sack of shit.
Dirtbag. Big.
Riley, so the last question, I know we started the conversation with formality, the last question is a formality. Um, do you certify or declare a penalty perjury in the law state of Washington, everything you said today is true and correct?
Just trying to catch that first, or is this basically just that everything I said is the truth? Uh, to the best of my knowledge. I just, I want it out there that man, my, my head is not good. It is not good. Um, it's not like, I don't have urges or anything like that. It's just, I don't, I don't know, like, god damn it, I wish, I wish you guys knew me, I wish, I wish you knew me, you know? This is just weird, this is a weird situation, it's, you know, and, 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 that, I'm thinking of myself right now, I am, I'm thinking of myself. I should be thinking about Willow and Maya and, uh, the rest of the kids and the community, that's, that's who I need to keep in mind, that's who I hurt, crushed, let down. You know, I'm just, I guess, just a fucked up individual.
Like you said, we're at that, we're at that crossroad where, where change can happen. And the first step of that is, is taking ownership of your actions and committing your actions, and coming clean with them. And getting it out in the open so that you can not have a bottle of love aside, it's not your secret no more. And then start moving forward, addressing why those are just happening, or why the, the thought happened, and why the touching happened. And then not what happened anymore. Does everything you said today, you're incorrect?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and is your statement freely, voluntarily, without any threats or promises?
Uh, yeah.
Um, so from here, uh, we're gonna take a walk and, uh, you're gonna be booked into jail tonight. And like you said, I'll have that talk with the prosecutor in the morning, I'll call him if I don't know. But you did talk to us about it. You, you're sorry for what happened, and it was a mistake to happen. Um, real quickly, I was, I was meaning to jump back on, I'm gonna kick back, but, um when we were when we were talking about what, um, Willow said when she was talking today. And then you said that you, that you know, it was like two days ago, you touched her vagina, um you said you said, well, I'll have that talk with the prosecutor in the morning, I'll call him if I don't know. But you did talk to us about it. And you're sorry for what happened, and it was a mistake to happen. Um, real quickly, I was, I was meaning to jump back on, I'm gonna kick back, but, um when we were when we were talking about what, um, Willow said when she was talking today. And then you said that you, that you know, it was like two days ago, you touched her vagina. Um, you said, you know, your hands kind of went down there, and you made that motion of like, I mean, we're all dudes, right? So you made that motion of like, you, you kind of just went around, it's almost like that cupping motion, right? Like when you're sticking your hand down there on your wife or girlfriend or whatever, right, so you're kind of cupping in there. Um, when your, your hands, your fingers got down there under her, her vagina, so you're under the, the underwear, and you have I don't know all the medical terms, but you got there, the, the lips or whatever, right there. Um, was it like, I mean, just like all your fingers down there, three of them, what?
Saying it like these two.
Okay, and it was kind of just like feeling, what it was like there?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and while your fingers were down on her vagina, but on the lips there. You're saying you, your, your fingers like, you made that motion of like diving in, like you never went in there?
No, no.
Okay.
Just on the surface.
So what were you doing on the surface?
Like, just feeling.
Just feeling around?
Just being a fucking stupid, stupid worthless sack of shit. I don't, I don't know, I'm wondering what I was doing, what is expecting to happen, where I was even going with it, just a weird dick, just a weird impulse, a weird, what the fuck?
Is it, is it possible that her saying that your fingers went in is because, and I don't, I don't, I'm a guy, but, um just moving your hands around there, I mean, even if you're just moving around a little bit, it could still kind of go in a little bit, does that make any sense?
Yeah.
Is it, is that pretty possible, that what happened?
Yeah, that could be.
Okay, so, so we're not talking like, you're not going all the way into her vagina, but, I mean, even if your hands are moving around on her vagina, you're going in a little bit, just moving around feeling?
Yeah, like I'm not, I don't, I don't know how to explain that, it was not, I didn't just reach in and just stick my fingers in.
Right.
You know, it's just a weird on the surface kind of, you know, if they're, you know, went in a little bit, it'd be, you know, just like, I, I don't know how to explain it, yeah.
Right, I get what you mean, but like, you know, when you're moving your hands around down there, and you know, the lips will separate and things like that, and your hands will, your fingers will, I mean and I believe they're gonna go in a little bit, beyond just the, the lips there, right? Like they're just gonna, they're gonna breach just a little bit, you're not sticking your fingers all the way in. Um, but, I mean, is that what happened, that you kind of just went in just a little bit?
I could've been, yeah, like.
Well, wait, what did you feel then, was it like, was it wet at all, or like what did you feel?
Uh, I'd say wet, yeah.
Okay, answer for just going off of that, that, I mean it, they would've had to go in just like, just It, they would've had to go in just a, just a little bit, just to break that, that barrier, those lips. But still, it means that you're driving all the way in, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right? Okay, so that sounds about right, what's going on? Like for your fingers to get wet, you're moving, moving around, your fingers going just a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay. And it was just the one time you touched her vagina or did it happen another time?
That was that time.
Okay, just the one?
Yeah.
And then her anus? You ever touch it at all?
No, if, if I have, um, like finger brushed against it possibly. Um, just by, you know, touching her butt.
Just by touching her butt?
Yeah.
Like. Like on underneath the clothes, touching her butt, like grabbing her butt and then maybe your finger went by her, by her anus?
Yeah, well, I, I, I remember one time, um, going under her clothes, grabbed her butt and then it's possible that. With, you know. Near her anus.
Like you reached down a little bit too far and got to the anus?
Possibly.
I mean, it happens, it's. It's a, it's not as noticeable from someone's hand that feel the anus versus the vagina, so I, I get that, but, I mean. If your hand, so you're saying your hand did go underneath her clothes at one point on her butt and you may have touched her hands at some point?
Yeah, yeah. That's just me being truthful.
And did that happen also two days ago?
No, that was. A while ago. But there too. Three, I don't know, like I said, I, I mentally still feel like it's January. It's barely out of January.
Mm-hmm.
I feel like that, that's, that, I don't know, I can't explain it. I really can't.
And what you were describing of. How your fingers were rubbing around. On the outside and slightly inside her vagina, was that what happened two days ago also?
That was the time that it happened, it was two days ago.
Okay. And did that situation happen any other time?
No. We had to grab her, above her clothes. Just quick grab and then.
Just the one thing that I keep thinking about is, and I appreciate you being honest about everything up to this point. One thing that just keeps kicking in my head is, is that. When Willow was talking in her interview. She. Seemed pretty adamant in my rum that, that your fingers were inside of her. Is that?
A lot of times. She's talking about. About. You're coming in the bedroom in between five thirty and seven o'clock in the morning because that's when everybody else is sleeping. There was a lot of time so your hands were underneath the underwear. And touching, she, she called her private parts and we asked her what, what she meant by private parts and she says the parts. Why I peed and the parts why I poop and the parts that girls have at the point, so. And she said it happened a lot of times. She said it was happening almost, started almost two years ago and it's been happening up until this morning.
For that, that apology to really, really sit home with her and mean something. We gotta know about those. We're already beyond it at this point, right? But we want. For that apology to be sincere and. And meaningful to her. She's obviously. Had these feelings that had these things done to her. That have brought up the conversations between you two where you talked to her about it passionately and then. But for it to really set in. You've been open and honest. But I won't have to continue. Because I, it was hard not, you know, I mean. She's. I believe what she's saying. I believe that what she's saying is, is what happened. And I believe what you're telling us is getting us better and I believe you, that you. Are apologetic and, and remorseful for your actions. But it doesn't complete everything that she's telling us. Now, is that something that, what Willow's saying, what TJ just talked about? Something that happened? It's, it's. You continuing to be honest with yourself and with us. We gotta keep that process open, right? I apologize for jumping back on it, but it just kicked in my head as I was thinking. It's been a long day. But it just kicked in my head as I was thinking, like, wait, actually during the interview, this is something that she brought up. And then she said it multiple times. As, as being something that was the most traumatic portion of everything to her. So is that true?
I'll just go. To fully heal. One hundred percent. It's not her fault. It's not her fault that. I can't control myself. My issues, my demons that I've developed are not her problem. I want to see her. Not feel any kind of pain mentally, physically, emotionally from any of this. Moving forward. I want her to heal fully. So I, I would agree with her.
So that did happen?
I would, I would agree with her. Cause I want that kid to heal fully.
How many times did your finger go inside her?
Maybe. Twice. Like it was not a. A daily thing or anything like that. It was not. I don't know, it was just like fucking pick in my mind that I just, you know, just curious that. Fuck off now, I don't know.
So it was more than just those times, this, you said more than twice, right? Or you said more than twice or twice?
Well, like going inside.
Yeah, when your fingers would go inside her vagina?
It was not one or two, three. Time it was, it wasn't that many times, wasn't.
Okay, and when your fingers would go inside her, um, that's more than what we already discussed. So your fingers were going inside her?
Still, that.
Okay.
And then, uh, she told me, um, she didn't like that and so I stopped.
Oh, so she was away for it?
Yeah.
Okay. And when was the last time that happened?
Uh, a couple days ago.
What about this morning?
No.
So, two days ago. Your fingers went inside her vagina?
No. Last day of Tuesday. And it was last Friday, Thursday.
In the morning?
That's in the midday, roughly.
In her bedroom?
Yeah. And she was, she was still sleeping.
Okay. Did all of these incidents when you touched her, did they all occur in the bedroom, in her bedroom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Were you ever worried about somebody also walking in and seeing it happen?
Yes. Well, also at the same time, I, uh. In that moment, I don't, I don't know. Where my brain went. I don't understand how to explain it. I don't. I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. It's like I, myself, who are you, you see right now, shut off. And then it's just. A physical thing that I did. Uh, explain that.
Did you get an erection when it happened?
No.
Did you masturbate afterwards?
No.
So it just happened?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so I didn't mean to jump back into that. That's, it was just, like I said, it kicked in my head from earlier. Um, but same thing, same formality, declare the penalty of perjury on the laws of state of Washington. If the same you tried to us. It's true, correct and given freely and voluntarily without any threats or promises of any kind.
So Riley, this is our statement form. These two signatures from here, one here is that you were advised of your rights at the beginning of the interview and that you acknowledged your rights. Um, and then there's second signatures down on this line that it's that penalty perjury statement that it just asks you in the back of your mouth, which is signature.
Riley, I'm gonna walk you up, just like, uh, TJ taught, I will walk you. Just right around the corner here. Um, I'm not gonna cut you up in the front, don't run or back, don't run from me. I don't feel like running today. Not one. Okay, let's go, that thing's perfect.
Jacket. Give me cash from the wallet?
No.
Do you need phone numbers off your phone?
Okay.
Yeah.
Jacket. Give me your jacket over here.
No. Down the lane, alright?
Yeah, that police station is crazy.
Riley, can I just take your cuffs off?
Secret there, we'll take your cuffs off.
Think they're cool, we'll take the cuffs off? Yeah, alright, Riley, can I take your cuffs off real quick? Fucking need to put them on back, I don't want to. Alright. I'm gonna have to see. We'll be right back now. We gotta go drop all this stuff.
You ain't shit, Riley.
Can you slip us a booking paper and I'll give you this stuff and we'll be right back.
I, uh. I'll take the cuffs off. Check. Hold on.
Well, there you have it, everyday people, man. He went to jail. Like, comment, subscribe, I'mma let you know.